Let's call this Dixon County Planning Commission meeting to order, January eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Mr. Qualls, could I get you to give devotion, please?
Gracious God, righteous heaven, Father, with the lack of this opportunity to sit here this evening to conduct business to benefit residents of our county, while we try the things that we discuss and things we do will actually do that. Father, we pray that He'll guide us in our discussions. We pray for those who lead. We pray for the mayor, commissioners, and all those executive authority over us, Father, and we pray that they will continue to uphold what's right for this county and for what's right in the wider sense of things. And we pray that all these constituents be ready in the name of your power. We do pray.
Amen. Um, Mr. R.J. Colmer, term had expired and he wished not to re-serve. So his position was filled, twelfth district by Mr. Mitchell Harden. So we'd like to welcome you at this time. And after that, Mr. Darnell, would you call roll?
Todd Berry?
Here.
Pina Ferris?
Here.
Darren Green?
Here.
Todd Lindsey?
Here.
Robert Qualls?
Here.
Tommy Brown? Jeff Chase?
Here.
Shane Chandler?
Here.
Gary Peeler? Christie Sullivan? Patrick Reagan?
Here.
Mitchell Harden? Try me, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Um, at this time, I would like to recognize visitors in the crowd. And if you have not signed in, so please do so up here at the front table as you exit. We'll move into the minutes. Everybody looked over the minutes of the previous, the, uh, November meeting?
Yes.
We did not have a meeting in December. Everybody liked the minutes? Any questions, comments, motions?
Chairman, I move the minutes, the November meeting to be approved this minute.
Have a motion by Robert Falls to approve the November minutes. Do I have a second? Have a second by Jeff Chase? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor state aye. Oppose? Thank you. Minutes approved. Nobody signed up for the public comments. We'll move into the items. Item number one is the final plat for lots three and four of the Harmon property, Jones Creek Road subdivision. Tax map ninety-five parcel ten point one-three, five point two acres. Jones Creek Road, White Bluff, Tennessee, A-one agriculture, fifth district.
Okay, this, this was surveyed by Christie surveying to create two new lots, which are lots three and four. Uh, lots one and two were previously approved administratively in May of twenty twenty-two. Uh, Brian, you have any comments?
Just, uh, building on that, um, well, as I stated, uh, upon leaving on the one, the specific district regulations for the one attached to this report, the section, there are no outstanding comments.
There we go. Red light.
Good to hear you.
So I'll just pick up where it was, uh, just rolling off of that. Um, all properties zoned A-one. The specific district regulations for A-one are attached. This report is attachment A. Uh, minimum lot size in A-one is one point five acres. Each of the two new proposed lots exceeds that minimum requirement. And as part of the review, there are no outstanding corrective comments for the plat. Uh, one additional comment, uh, there's an unnamed tributary of Jones Creek that appears to run through a portion of the property. As a minor stream, it is not required to be shown on the plat. And that's the end of the comments.
Yes, Mr. Qualls?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will state for the record that I have heard no input or comments about this, either positive or negative. I don't see anything about this proposal that violates the nature of the area or the, or somehow degrades the surrounding properties. And for that reason, I move that it be approved.
Okay. Have a motion to approve by Robert Falls? Do have a second. Have a second by Darren Green? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passed. We'll move into other business. Um, item number one will be changed to R-three revisions.
Uh, if you remember, we had a moratorium on this and the working group for the planning commission had made some revisions. Uh, the planning commission approved and forwarded them to the county commission for public hearing in November of last year. Uh, the county commission approved them unanimously by unanimous vote. Uh, but at the final reading in December, the commissioner voted to defer and send it back here to make two recommended changes. Uh, the changes were, one was a front setback. Uh, they would like to see it changed to thirty to give you a little bit more area for your house footprint. And the other one was to give you, uh, two access points. That point was in there and they wanted more clarification on it. And with, if you had a cul-de-sac, it's going to be a thousand foot, so you could technically have about twenty-four properties on it. So that language would be changed to twenty-five lots.
You have a question, Mr. Qualls?
I've got a comment about the, uh, furl and what I think about it. If you're ready for it and the commissioners are ready, and I'll, I'd like to address it in reverse order if I could.
Please.
I have no problem with the second change and I think that's a good clarification. I got a lot of problem with the first change. We've got within the town of White Bluff and really out in my district, like the boat factory on Jones Creek Road, stuff that doesn't have hardly any setback at all because it was grindfob. Well, we don't need more stuff with almost no front yard. I think this is silly. And so it changes the shape of the house can be built. That's what the regulations do. We tell people what they can and can't do. I don't want to micromanage it, but this isn't micromanagement. A thirty-foot wide front yard is stupid and it's building really low value stuff. And I'm totally opposed to it.
Okay.
Does that need clarification?
Pretty clear, sir. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Chase.
Ah.
Turn your mic on, please.
Is this up for final approval tonight?
No, it will have to go back to public hearing again.
Okay.
This is the final reading from us and then it will go to the county commission.
It was that final reading that they decided to defer it. But at the, uh, you know, the public hearing, it was, everybody was in agreement.
Yeah, like Mr. Qualls, I have reservations with that also, with that footage. Just want to make sure.
Man, we can, we can take action, but the county commission can override us, so.
You can make whatever recommendation you want. That will go back to them as public hearing.
Historically, they take the same side as we decide because that's why we're here. But they don't have to. That is correct. But, uh, if you all don't like what you see, we can put what we agree upon and see what they think. Right.
If you want to put a big house on a small lot, you're messing up anyway. We're helping, we're, we're saving people from themselves, is what I'm saying. And we're, I think we're saving this county from a lot of low value looking. I don't want to say what it compares to. I'm sure thinking about it, but the, it, it, let's say it compares to a lot of stuff in my district. That's one reason that we finally got zoning in this county is because of stuff just like this. And we don't need to do this. We're undermining our county, its property values, the whole idea of planning and zoning. Cause if it's, well, it's telling people what to, yeah, if we're not going to tell anybody what to do anything, we just need to give up and go home. This is planning and zoning at its most basic and simplest. And especially out in the unincorporated part of the county. These towns can do what they want to. No, I vote, I move that we disapprove this change and send it back to them stating that we I'm a, well, I don't, I don't know if all of you, I'm vehement. I'm vehemently opposed to this. I'm not a little opposed to it. I'm totally opposed to it. And there's no good reason for it that you'll ever sell me on.
Okay. So the, the the R-three revisions as a whole, you're opposed to the?
You, you'd want to send it back to them with the fifty-foot setback and the changes to the second.
Yeah, I accept the check. The second thing I think is good. But I'd rather not change R-three at all and put this in. I'm, I'm just, that's my opinion. Like I said, it's one of many, but it is mine.
Sending it back is fifty and with the second change in there?
No, that, I mean, obviously it's within the planning commission to sit back, but your explanation is, and you'll be making the second change and sending that back with all the other changes we had.
Correct.
Not incorporating the first change that was pre.
Correct.
Counselor, if that needs to be my motion, that is in fact my motion.
Is, is everybody clear on Mr. Qualls' motion? And?
Yeah, the front setback would be fifty, then you know, the, the more detailed description of the twenty-five lots for the second entrance is what he's, yes.
So the, the motion and the second are in total agreeance? And everybody here knows what the motion is?
Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell there?
Yep.
Okay, with that, um, take a, prob, take a roll call?
Yes, if you want to, sure.
Mr. Chairman, let's be clear on what yes and no means, please.
Yes is to send it back to the commission or to the committee?
Foot front setback and the change on the, uh, amount before it needs a second entrance.
Are we sending this back to the committee or to the commission?
No, this should go back as public hearing to the county commission.
To the county commission.
Mr. Qualls, maybe you should clarify it with a proper motion.
Okay, I'll attempt to do that, Commissioner. What I am moving is that we, the Dixon County Planning Commission disapprove of the proposed change for the R-three residential district that would allow the front setback for residential property be reduced from fifty feet off the road to thirty feet off the road. And that we do in fact approve that the twenty-five lot major subdivision be the one that's required to have at least two access points.
Yeah.
Can you agree with that, sir?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. And everybody is still clear with that?
One more question?
Yes.
Is, does it help, hurt, or have no effect if any reasoning is attached to that as to why we are sending it back? Not just here, do something with it, but why? That was my question.
I'll state my reasons. We don't want to create a bunch of low value little houses jammed up against the side of the road that look awful. I'm using acceptable language, but I don't want it to degrade our, uh, county, the, the unincorporated parts of the county with a bunch of just low looking stuff. And when you build stuff with no, no front or minimal front yard, that's what you get. I'm, period.
Does his second to that motion still care?
Still second.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote and I, or yes, is to send it back to the county commission.
Todd Berry?
Yes.
Pina Ferris?
Yes.
Darren Green?
Yes.
Todd Lindsey?
Yes.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
Jeff Chase?
Yeah.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Christie Sullivan? Patrick Reagan?
Yes.
Mitchell Harden?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, item number two is amendment to article four, section four dash zero one six. Query and requirements for drive-through facilities.
Right. And this is one of the handoffs, I think Andrew had changed some of the wording on. You have a copy of it?
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification, there, there was no change of the substantive language, just formatting, uh, from what y'all got in the packet on this item. So it's no change from what y'all saw.
Mr. Chairman, I, I am in complete concurrence with amending article four, section four point zero one six. And I'm amend, I'm in favor of the amendment that does this. All drive-through facilities shall be equipped with debris reciprocal, is easily accessible to drivers utilizing a drive-through and shall be so designed as to be used without the user having to leave their vehicle.
Yeah, they have better rolling policy protection. And it gives them the idea that I lose work everywhere. You can't put it in words, but it's there.
The motion?
If it needs to be, Mr. Chairman, I so moved the appropriate amendment to article four, section four point zero one six.
Have a proper motion by Robert Qualls and a proper second by Todd Lindsey? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number three is amendments to article three, article five, and article eight for renewable energy facilities.
Well, this is something that, you know, you had in your packet. Uh, Andrew had given another sheet with a little bit different wording. I take it it's what it is. Uh, and basically what it's going to do is going to make it a special exception in a, in the industrial zone. Uh, this is something in the future. We're seeing other counties dealing with it. We've had people contact us. Uh, you know, there's a lot of risk and hazards involved with something like this. And if you have it in an area that's industrial, you can at least monitor it and keep it where it's not completely everywhere in the county. Manda, you have anything to add or?
No, I think it's good to be prepared. We haven't seen one yet, but we know it's going to come, so you might as well.
We have had a couple of people contact us over the past year, that it, you know, checking into this type of thing.
And, and honestly, from, from our perspective, one of the biggest things is how, is it going to be insured that, uh, it's maintained and or decommissioned properly?
Absolutely.
It's a doggone want in forty years after a twenty acre solar field, uh, has gone to funk to just sit there idly. So this allows certain mechanisms to be put in place for that protection. And again, if it's not residential, talking to Amanda about this, you know, if you put solar panels on your house, it's fine. We're talking about anything over five acres, it's going to have to be in the industrial district, has to go before the BCA as a special exception with condition. That's what this is provided for and we ask that you approve of that. That's it.
Does, does this only apply to solar, um, energy type fields?
No, it applies in, I'll, Amanda's kind of been a little bit more, she's done more research. It, it's renewable. Solar is going to be your primary, but I assume it's going to apply to wind or anything else that could come in.
Okay.
Things we haven't thought of.
Yes, that's what, that's what scares me is the things we haven't thought of yet. Uh, so five acres is quite a large plot of land.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in my opinion, for something we
Well, the one we had come in discussed was talking forty to fifty acres.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I understand that. And, and I've, I've seen some of these, uh, over in Kentucky. Um, where they will go out and put a bunch of solar panels out and, uh, they're a sight, I'll have to say. Um, that, that's the only, I'd like, honestly, I'd like to see that minimum lot size maybe a little smaller than that. That's just my opinion. I'm not going to stand, uh, i-if the rest of my constituents agree with this, I'm not going to stand in the way of. That's just my opinion.
I think at the moment, and I haven't dealt this even probably I need to, I know Amanda, you have, but I believe five is actually the smallest thing you can go.
Right. If you go any smaller, you're going to be a subdivision lot too.
That, that is true. Uh, so this five acres is only in the industrial areas, is that correct? These are not in residential areas and, or agricultural areas in any way, correct?
If it's five acres or more, it has to be in the M-one or M-
M-two, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Counselor, I, I just, I don't know. It's, it's one of those things that's ebbed and flowed over the last couple of decades. But I'm, the one thing I'm thinking about is methanol production from biomass. Wood byproducts, uh, switchgrass, that sort of stuff. UT did a pilot program on that years ago in Vonor, Tennessee. This would seem to apply to that to me, although for that sort of thing, you need a whole lot more than five acres. Or at least I would hope they would put it on a lot more than five acres. But it seems like this would apply to that too. That's your opinion?
I, I believe it would.
Okay.
And you can get into an interpretation of what renewable is.
Uh, that's where I'm going.
I'm going to say that's renewable.
All right.
I think that'd probably fall under agriculture too, and that would be a whole separate entity.
See, that's, that's what I'm wondering about. But now, of course, obviously what raising a crop of anything is agriculture, if it is switchgrass or whatever. I don't think it panned out to be all that feasible at the time, but with, you know, future inflation, that could be turned on its head. It is technically, it's feasible. Just like making rubber from golden rod plants eighty years ago was technically feasible. It just never made economic sense. And it probably never will, but who knows? So I, I just, when we're trying to cover eventualities that hadn't happened yet like this, I just want to cover them as well as we can cover them. But I'm thinking about those people in twenty sixty and what they're going to think of us.
Anything that I can personally think of this five acres would cover, because I know, is it Murphysboro that capped their landfill and they're recouping the methane? And running it in their equipment after they filter it?
Sounds right, I, I, I.
So I mean, anything I can think of is going to be larger than the five acre footprint and it's industrial. So I don't see where this, it could, it could probably always be revisited, correct?
You could, obviously you could always revisit anything in the zoning resolutions, uh, as Lando was mentioning to me. We don't have anything like that. This is, we, it does, I, uh, starting from, I will add again, without researching it, I don't want to speak, uh, before I, I do too much, but um, if you're going to do something with any form of biomass, you're probably going to need a facility, not an engineer, not an expert. That's covered under this, and not where we would say you'd have to be zoned, it'll be required. I will not sure that nobody's doing that right next to my, so that's.
Mr. Qualls, I think if you're raising the crop, uh, switchgrass, we'll say with that intent and purpose in mind, I think, uh, raising it is agricultural, processing is going to be industrial. So that should, that should cover that. Now, let me ask you, uh, this, Mr. Mills, is what about a, a battery facility? Or a, a, a facility, uh, that builds batteries or a facility that disposes of batteries, uh, is the, this lithium battery is starting to get larger and larger. Uh, we do not want the disposal of those batteries in this county ever.
And we don't want to be even processed except in heavy industry areas. That's right.
See, the one that had come here, they would have the solar panels and they would have storage batteries too. Of course, you see what happens to a lot of the cars that are, you know, yes, there's a lot of hazards involved with that. That would include in that too.
That, that would seem to be manufacturing of some kind, that again, it's going to have to be in the industrial. I don't think that can just happen on an A-one seven lot. I agree.
I, I think this deserves a lot of, uh, research. I understand that we don't have anything in place and, and I'm going to, um, I'm going to go with your gut here on this. If you feel like this is the way we need to head, the direction we need to head, to get something down on paper, it's, something is better than nothing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And again, it can always be revisited if they start from the beginning.
Right, right.
At least it's a starting point.
It, it is. I, I just, I'm, I'm always apprehensive about things like this and I don't want something to come in on us and we not be able to make a decision uh, in a timely manner. Um, and we've got an individual sitting there with the clock ticking.
With the areas these people were looking at were all agricultural, rural, rural, rural areas.
And it would not, that would not work.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Um, so we need to make a motion, uh, to amend article three, section three point one three oh. Is that correct? Is that the way we need to work it?
No, that's, that's the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Which one is it?
Article three, article five, and article eight for renewable energy facilities.
Okay, very good. But what Mr. Chair, what Mr. Chairman said there, I'm not going to repeat that. I'll make a motion. It will.
So I have a amendment, I mean, I'm in, have a motion by Todd Berry.
Uh, if I could just ask one question real quick.
Yes.
Where I'm apologizing. Um, how would this affect, let's say, in those industrial areas, a large plant that wants to use solar energy for, as renewable cycling through its own facility? And they need more besides just their roof? If they're already on a five acre tractor larger, would that fall in, into this? Or would they need an additional open five acres to put the cells on?
Well, right now, we're limited on the industrial area. Let's see, our counties broke down into rural. And, you know, the rural area, um, I'll have to get you a map on it. Covers the majority of the county. You don't have a, you got the proposed growth. You got the urban boundaries, but your rural area and industrial zone is not something you can even rezone to. So that covers especially the northern half of the county. Because you, you don't have any big cities that you have, you know, proposed growth area in.
Right. Yeah, I think I understand that. My, my question is, is for, for areas that are already zoned industrial and where we already have heavy industrial in that area. If those companies or plants decided to use solar as a primary source, would they minimally need to be on a five acre?
And they would have to have a special exception to do that from the BCA.
Most of them are probably going to be on twenty acres and the building itself will probably be five acres.
We, we actually already have an example of that over in White Bluff with Interstate Packaging. They have some large solar panel out next to highway forty-seventh. So that's a good question.
It's in the incorporated part of White Bluff. So we don't, yours is Dixon, but I think that's an exact example of what you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay, have a proper motion?
Question, sir, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I can't speak to the legal ease of this, but I am curious why number six says an emergency response plan demonstrates to the satisfaction of the boarding is board of zoning appeals, et cetera. But number two or number three, I'm sorry, number three and number four, both say to the satisfaction of the boarding board of the zoning appeals, the applicant shall present. It doesn't say anything about approval there. And I'm just want to make sure that there's nothing open there that's, okay, well, I presented, uh, you got to approve it. But there's nothing there that says the planning board, to the planning board's approval.
So satisfied, and if they're, they're not satisfied, they shouldn't approve it, just like we saw earlier tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the structure, it's a good point. The structure of those are just a little bit different. Some of this is from state elements, but, uh, it's the same. It has to be to the satisfaction of the board of zoning appeals, which means they would necessarily have to.
Okay. In your opinion, that's great. I just want to make sure we're not painting ourselves into a corner here. That's, okay.
Okay. So I have a proper motion by Todd Berry and proper second by Robert Qualls. Okay. So I have a proper motion by Todd Berry and proper second by Robert Qualls. Any further questions? If not, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. We'll move into item number four, which is amendment to Article three, section three point one one zero landscaping and buffer strips.
All right. You had that in your packet and you had another handoff from Andrew tonight. Uh, basically it will, uh, replace the whole section in the book. Amanda, have any more information on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll add, uh, this Amanda and I worked on something very similar, I think almost identical in White Bluff, that was adopted by the planning division, the capital there. Primary goal of this, and then correctly see it differently, is to provide more specific, more tailored and natural native species for buffers between different zoning districts, uh, between lots, uh, when development comes in. So that it's not just right next and open to the lot mix.
Not just a bunch of dead country.
It is robust, uh, but it, it's already, not that it matters to you per se, but it's already been vetted by White House Council. They approved this version for the most part and it's we've already worked on it. It's now coming to you as, as a good idea, uh, from jurisdiction inside the county. So obviously I owe direct questions to Amanda because she's the one who put all the work into this, but it, it, it is a significant upgrade in my opinion. On, on the bottom of the curve.
I, I think one thing that, that in my district that I've been, um, made aware of and actually went out and visited some of these sites is during the construction processes, we've had many instances where culverts have been washed out by erosion, uh, neighboring plots of land, even across the road, water has washed across the road and took sediment and dirt across the road and washed through, uh, pastures and things of this nature. In, in your opinion, uh, would this solve some of those issues during those construction processes?
I think so.
Uh, part of what are included into regulations are EPSC version provisions, semi control measures. Uh, they're just not written in such, such a construction oriented way that there are tree barriers that are for that.
Which does state the exemptions on, you know, you do have certain exemptions, which would be your single family dwelling in mobile homes, which is majority of probably what you're talking about. Unfortunately.
But correctly, no, this, any subdivision that comes in, this is still applied to, the new subdivision, not the existing.
Right, 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 right. But we did pass something what last year or so, if they do have stuff that comes out into the road, they are responsible for that. That's my, we did change, I think it was last year. Correct. Yeah. So who is to enforce that, Dave? It's the highway department. Will. They'll at least check it out and come back to us if they need to. Then we can, you know, we will not, at that point, if we have to, we can stop doing inspections for them. But the highway department's usually the one that will receive the complaints.
Mm hmm. That's right. Um, because this is so encompassing and, and replacing the complete article, I'd like to request a bit more time to review this if I could. We could maybe push it till the next meeting. I'm not sure if anybody else feels the same way.
Mr. My only objection to doing it to that, I understand what you're saying, is that this is, I will say this is such a major improvement over what we currently got. And we're not, again, this is not an irrevocable act. We can adopt this and, and then trim around the edges or whatever we need to do, but I think this is such a major step forward that we, if we don't take it tonight, we're still going to need to take this or something very similar to it going ahead. And part of it is that it's so good, it's, it's explicit in the need to use native species and how it breaks down. But it's worded in a way that it's, I think it'd be hard to say, well, I didn't know what that meant. And I, I don't think it's, as it stands now, I don't think it's confusing or ambiguous. And that's what I like about it, but no, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. It's, it's a lot if you've never digested something like this before. I'll, I'll concede that point readily.
I would just like to add that I can see both viewpoints as I look at this right now. Couple of things, a minimum of, well, I'm sorry, a minimum of ten shrubs for a hundred feet. This is a shrub. So is there anything that's going to decide what is a shrub? What is a tree? I mean, common sense says it should be something that is going to grow. How long will it take to grow? What's it going to look like while it's growing? Um, but as Mr. Carl, Mr. Quarles stated, we can modify that if somebody puts mini shrubs out and says, there's my shrubs. So.
There, there, top of that, they'll put the page. A four page, there is, uh, size of what a can, three hundred stories, three, all that shrub. A shrub is three feet and high and planted. Find there, Jeff, so. I think that's helpful. I can't correct it. Okay.
And there are exceptions depending on what borders to the back. We've looked at that and, and what, you know, we've, we've made exceptions.
Nobody's been a more of an advocate of taking it easy and giving people the benefit of the doubt on this than I've been over the years. And I imagine as long as I'm here, I'll still be inclined that direction, but
Right.
That this is an improvement over what exists. That's, that's what I'm saying for it.
Yep. I agree. Would, would you like to, uh? Okay. All right. Any, any further questions or motions or, you know, I, you know, when I first looked at this, I thought maybe one, one way plant them and then come back with another set of trees and stagger them to get a fuller effect, but you know, then I thought maybe I was being redundant. So.
Mr. Chairman, I will, I'll make the motion that we accept. Uh, that we replace, delete and replace the current Article three, section three point one one zero. We replace it with this resolution.
Okay. Have a, uh, motion by Todd Berry to amend to Article three, the new section three, one, one, zero, three point one, one, zero, the landscaping and buffer stripes. Do I have a second? Have a second by Christie Sullivan. Any further discussion now? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Looks like now item five is election of officers.
Right. I need the chairman, vice chairman, and secretary of planning.
All right. We'll, uh.
As RJ was the vice chairman.
RJ was the vice chairman. We're going to need a, we're going to need a, uh, a chairman, secretary, vice chairman. What is the wheel of the board?
I can take the votes that we, we need all the officers.
Well, you've got to vote one at a time. I don't think RJ will serve. I, I don't, I don't think we can, I don't think that's procedurally allowable, Mr. Chairman, as, as much as I concur with a lot of the sentiment. I think we need to vote on each officer individually. And so my first question is, given all your responsibilities, duties and all that, are you still interested in serving as the chairman of the Dixon County Planning Commission?
I'm, I'm very honored to serve unless somebody wishes to serve more.
Hearing no one say that, Mr. Chairman, I nominate Shane Chandler for the position of chairman of the Dixon County Planning Commission.
I'll second that. Okay. Have a proper motion and a proper second for Shane Chandler to be chairman. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would move at this time that nomination cease and Mr. Chandler be declared reelected chairman of Dixon County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Thank you. Okay. We now have nominations for vice chairman. Anybody have nominations for vice chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Mr. Jeff Chase. I would second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I have a nomination and a second for Jeff Chase. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Third and final call. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, hearing no other nominations, I move that, uh, Mr. Jeff Chase be elected by acclamation as vice chairman of the Dixon County Planning Commission.
Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chairman, Jeff Chase.
It's a surprise. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, now vote on the order of, uh, secretary. Do we have a nomination for secretary?
That's currently me because I'm the one that signs the plats.
Do we have?
Still need to be you, Mr. Darnell? Probably so. I would nominate Mr. Darnell to be the secretary of the Dixon County Planning Mission.
Have a motion and a second for Mr. Darnell, Mr. Dave Darnell to be secretary of planning and zoning. Do I have another nomination? All nominations cease. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Darnell. You got a new job and a raise to go with it. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Yes.
The mayor, uh, is wanting input from this body, uh, obviously not in this meeting. Uh, any other items within the zoning provision or the subdivision regulations, who really are from here for instance, so it's not a regulation. If you would like to see addressed or amended, please bring them forward, uh, send them to one of us. So we just got to put it in the paper. Obviously you're always looking at players to the truth, but I think y'all have a unique perspective. I think the mayor certainly thinks so. And, and if y'all have any ideas or things that you think are not being addressed in the zoning resolution, please put it forward so that people can.
Hey, with that being said, the next scheduled meeting will be Thursday, February the eighth of two thousand twenty-four.
I have nothing for it.
Well, so far. Looks like you, you'll get to practicing home in front of America. Motion to adjourn.